Okay, this is a meeting of the Southwick Board of Selectmen. It's being held at Town Hall and also remotely with the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Fox, and the C A O in Town Hall, and Mr. Mogul and Mr. Dede are phoning in remotely pursuant to the law. And it is 6:00 on Tuesday, April 7th, 2020. And I'm going to give the tape to the Board Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Steinhardt, and welcome, everyone, to the Select Board meeting of Tuesday, April 7th, 2020. Let me read the following. All meetings of the Select Board are recorded. Meeting notices pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 30A, 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitations to the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Select Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Office of the Attorney General's webpage. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. The town will preserve, persevere to install conference call capabilities for other parties to listen in and participate accordingly. If not possible, we will post on the town's website in an audio recording as soon as possible after the meeting. I'd now like to begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we begin, I have some sad news. We lost a longtime member and former town official, Cemetery Commissioner Roy Benson. So before we begin, if we could all have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. All right, we're opening the meeting. The first thing to discuss is the COVID-19 discussion and actions. And the first thing I had on here was the transfer station, yardway site, and bulk goods. Mr. Dede has been doing work on this. Joe, do you want to lead this?
Yep, basically, I sat down again with our Board of Health and our, what's his name, D P W Director, Mr. Brown. And as of last week, we're going to wait two weeks for this curve to be the curve that Israel isn't going to be, and then we're going to do something. I told him we got two weeks. After that, maybe we go to T J Barkmose for two weeks to get the push of crap out, and then we're going to be accepting it back at the transfer station. So we got two weeks. Let's just sit tight and leave it on the agenda, and then we'll run halfway back on it, one way or the other.
Okay. Doug, any problems?
Nope.
Okay, so we're going to keep that tabled, and I think we all agree that we just can't continue to tell people no. We have to come up with a solution at some point.
Yep.
Okay, that's good.
We have other COVID-related issues.
Go ahead, Carl.
Well, obviously, we're going to, we have more efforts underway to secure some laptops and other placement of PCs at other remote work locations for people that are working remotely. We are looking at ramping up with some more essential staff to relieve, relieve the Council on Aging and Treasure Collector's offices because the workload demands there have not decreased at all. They're as high as ever under these times of need. So we're working on those issues with other departments, and we've had people come forward from other departments to help those departments, so it's appreciated. And then we also need to authorize a memorandum of agreement for both chiefs to sign related to first responder quarantine facilities. Both the fire chief and the police chief have been in contact with their organizations. Mostly Russ's chief's organization and the group that he's with have begun to look at places that we're not going to really list here, but where we could put first responders if they had to be put into quarantine. And Chief, if you want to speak to that, or do you think we've covered it?
I think you've covered it pretty good. I guess the biggest question is what they're finding is, is there's first responders, should they get quarantined for whatever reason, may not want to go home or can't go home and infect their families, take that risk.
We need a vote.
So the police organization, the police chiefs and fire chiefs have jointly come up with this memorandum and a call share that we're looking to sign on to. It's kind of an insurance policy to make sure that, there's two, there's two levels. There's an insurance policy to make sure that we have a place to send them for small people.
Like a base rail.
And then, should you actually have somebody, then it goes to a different price.
Yeah, they signed it last year.
We would think it would probably be two weeks to a month that we would need to do this, see what happens.
All right, I would need a motion to approve.
Doug Mogul is making that motion.
I need a second.
Joe Dede, second.
All right, it'll be a roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Joe Dede, aye.
All right, Chief, you got the authorization.
Thanks, guys.
We thank you. How's everything else going, Chief Anderson?
Good, good, busy, but you know, just a lot of uncharted waters that we, a lot of stuff coming from the state that changes by the minute as far as protocols and protection and ways of doing things, but staff has been doing a great job trying to keep up with it all.
Yeah, Chief, we're going to, in a few minutes, we're going to address that other issue that the deputy submitted for the third temporary E M T.
Okay.
So stay on the line in case we need you.
All right, anything else, Mr. Steinhardt?
No, not under the COVID-19.
Okay, then the next thing we have is to discuss about the annual town meeting warrant articles, school district zoning amendments. Mr. Steinhardt?
Well, each one of you has a copy of what has come in from the different boards and committees, so we've received the, the normal two warrant articles from the school district who already held their public hearings and adopted their budget and sent notifications to the member communities for both their assessment and their capital borrowing. We received requests from Randy Brown, D P W, regarding an amount of free cash that is going to be used to obtain the survey and right-of-way boundaries and develop easements for the Revere Road issue, because until we go through town meeting like we did with Revere, Robin Road, secure the money and get those documents, then there's nothing that can really go before the planning board to go to the next step. So that's one article, that'll be a standalone. And then the next two, Randy had talked to you during the budget hearings, which was the water transmission main improvement bond for 575 and the sewer station upgrade bond for 340 out of the retained earnings of those enterprise funds.
Okay.
So no surprise there. And then Town Council's supposed to be working on the revolving account for the Conservation Commission, which you've already sent to him, right, to draft. And then he's also supposed to be working on the quarterly billing for real estate adoption that we would want to look at adopting, and then that would be sometime for fiscal year '22 probably, because there's a lag time to put it in place and get the staff ready to start that process. And then you go into all of your other warrant articles, your typical warrant articles that you do every year as housekeeping are the election, all of the issues with the town reports, appointment of minor officers, seller trade equipment, apply for and accept grants, and then there could be another borrowing authorization depending upon the bids coming in for the fire station work, because we've already had the, the pre-bid meeting has already happened. So that would be another potential bond. And then there's your annual budget warrant article, your department revolving fund reauthorizations, your four or five typical community preservation articles. And I know Doug has been talking to Dennis, and there might be an upcoming meeting for C P C, because they have some outstanding things that they need to vote on for those warrant articles, the admin and operating expense. I believe the Cemetery Commission was looking at some archiving. I believe there was another one for the old cemetery headstone restoration project.
Correct.
And I believe there was going to be an application for the open space plan recommendations from Dennis and Chris for signage and kiosk at the open space parcels.
Correct.
So are all of those familiar to the three of you?
Everybody?
Because we had a work session on that.
Yes.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't know that they've scheduled a meeting yet.
No, no, they have not, so. Okay, so there's those ones, and I don't know, maybe Marcus can tell us whether or not the zoning articles or amendments or anything will be forthcoming from the planning board?
Can you allow the Vice Chairman of the Planning Board to communicate with us, Doug?
He's got that right right now.
Yes, I don't think we were going to have anything ready because our original schedule for the public hearings, of course, not happening. So we'll have to see what Mr. Dougherty wants to do as far as trying to do a public hearing online. I don't know if there's a capability. I guess Zoom allows up to 100 participants, so I don't know whether that's legal or not, but anyway.
We have up to 300, and it would be totally okay under the modified open meeting law.
Okay, so I guess it's up to Mr. Dougherty to see if he wants to try to have those public hearings.
So Marcus, you'll follow up with him, right?
Yep, I'll communicate with him. We'd have to re-advertise it twice and then have the public hearing.
Marcus, the Planning Board's aware that we've changed the date of the town elections and annual town meeting to June?
I just saw that, oh, I know, through my nomination papers I received today in the mail, I, there was a letter in there that said that had changed, so I don't know if Mike Dougherty knows that yet.
Okay, can you communicate that to him?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, so that, that's, that's all we have so far for the annual. And then on the specials, there'll be the typical year-end transfers in some of the salary accounts for the selectmen's wanting to supplement the police, part-time dispatch, and other wage accounts. There'll be another O P E B donation, there'll be liquidating the snow and ice deficit.
Correct.
And some, you know, backfilling the substitute clerks and substitute custodial accounts because of backfilling people. Because I will tell you, gentlemen, this COVID-19, you know, certain positions have had to be here more than ever, especially when the building's on skeleton crew. We still need to be cleaning all of our buildings, including police and fire, that are 24 hours a day, seven day a week operations. So the, these are times where we can't scale back the spending on those types of departments. And then there'd be, if there's any repairs or anything that has to happen in other, other buildings. So Laura and Mel and Carol will be examining the different cost centers, and this'll come up too in our budget meetings that we'll have in the next couple of weeks amongst the board members and amongst the finance committee members.
Okay.
So that represents where we are right now with that item on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, and then you can speak to the chief about the next item on the ambulance staffing.
Okay, Chief, we're going into the Southwick Fire Department transition to E M T paramedic.
P for the third ambulance.
Right, and the equipment staffing for second ambulance?
Right, that's right here, Russ.
Okay. You want to speak to us about that?
Sure. So one of the things that's kind of a blessing and kind of a curse at the same time is you, as you know, we've had our challenges with staffing of late. Some good news is that Ian did just get cleared, the P truck got cleared for being a medic, to be able to ride with a medic in a basic, so frees up our, our schedule a little bit, so to speak. So instead of running double medics when Ian is on, he can run separately. But what that also allows is if Ian is working and Rich is on, now that allows the second ambulance to go out at the A L S level, which we've seen pretty much every day the ambulance has gone out on second calls due to some of the stuff that's going on. So as you know, last year's proposal, the, or the, next year's budget, excuse me, we are looking to bring the second ambulance up to the A L S, A L S level with the addition of a new monitor and some other equipment. So one of the things I'd like to explore is moving that timetable up and not waiting for that. Talking with Carl as far as how we fund this, here's the idea, the biggest thing is the monitor. We have some other equipment, we have some other residual equipment money that I think we could, we could staff for the drugs, and those types of things are less impactful. But the big item is the monitor, which is like a $40,000, $40,000 item. If we could agree to go down this road, we have a couple avenues, is, you know, offset some of the accounts that have some existing money and try to come up with a lease portion instead of going for the whole, you know, I guess what avenue would be go for emergency fund transfer for that money, for the $40,000, to try to get a, a new monitor. The second item would be to enter into a lease for about $8,000 for that, I believe it was a seven-year lease. And so now we're coming up with $8,000 right now that we could either get through, A, offsetting some other existing accounts, or B, one of the things I think that would be a great avenue for this is the donation that we received from the family in town that was looking for to do something for the ambulance. And I think putting some, putting that money towards that to bring the second ambulance up to the A L S level is both a credit to the donor and a, and a good service to the town, and it'd be a perfect.
And Russ, that was what, I believe, $15,000?
That total was $15,000, correct.
Okay.
But here's my challenge, I guess, or our challenge, is if we say, yeah, that's great, but we're entering into a multi-year lease, and I don't know how that comes into procurement laws and all that under the, you know, our current situation.
Well, you can, you can do a, you can do a three-year lease without a town meeting vote.
Okay.
So what would be, so what you need to find out would be, what would it be if you take some of the existing money we just talked about, plus this $15,000, net it down, net the 40 down to some other number, and what would it be for a three-year lease?
Okay, I can look into that.
I think that's doable.
I have the number, I just don't have it in front of me.
I think, I think that's doable if we do it that way.
Okay.
And by the way, just to let, just to let everybody know, the reason why, the chief and I talked about this, that he's still borrowing money from existing accounts that we may have to replenish through the special town.
Special town meeting.
The FinCom Reserve.
Okay.
But right now, the FinCom has four pending, they've got about 107 in the account, they got four pending FinCom reserves that you've been signing off, the town nurse and some other stuff, various things. So that'll bring it down to 91. So that's why when the chief raised this issue about accelerating it, I didn't think it made sense to go from 91 minus 55, and then you're still waiting two months for a, for a special town meeting.
Correct, correct.
Because remember, you've pushed everything off even longer. So we'll catch up to that, and we'll move the monies over at that annual and special town meeting in June.
Right. The same issue we faced with the police department.
That's what you just, that's what we just talked about, the other thing. And when you deal with them, you're going to be taking it out of your existing salary reserve account to, along with those wage adjustments and free cash.
Right, to deal with that, okay. Is everyone in agreement with Russ going forward and doing the research for the three-year?
Yeah, it seems reasonable to do it. Obviously, the time is tight as far as the budget, and we've had quite a few reserve transfers this year, and we just got to be careful with that.
Correct. Joe?
Yeah, I'm fine with it. If you end up pulling the trigger, Chief, how long before you can get that piece of equipment?
Probably a week or so.
Oh, good, good.
All right.
So who's made the motion?
Okay, we'll do that in the form of a motion. Can I have a motion, please?
Doug Mogul, so moved.
Joe Dede, aye.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Joe Dede, aye.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Russ. What, do we have anything else for Russ?
Well, we do, we do have the resignation of Clark Robinson.
All right, we do need to accept the resignation of firefighter E M T. Do you have anything to say about that, Russ?
Well, I do.
Okay.
What, what this does, Mr. Chairman, is it, it further exacerbates what we talked about a few weeks ago when we authorized through your authority for.
Provisionals?
The other two provisional, so you and I also did a third provisional the other day.
Okay.
That we made an offer to. I don't want, I don't want to announce his name because he's not an internal candidate, but it was somebody that the deputy fire chief has vetted and put forward and is going to go through a, the necessary physicals, but he'll just be an E M T paramedic.
Okay.
And am I, am I correct along those lines, Chief?
Yes, yep, he's existing, works for existing agencies now.
Right, so the chairman and myself already did that based upon the earlier votes and delegations of authority by the Select Board.
Okay. All right, anything else for, okay, do we need a formal motion to accept that resignation? It's just F Y I.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Chief Anderson.
Thank you.
And stay safe, have our, all your people stay safe also. We greatly appreciate everything you're doing on the front lines.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, we've gone through everything that's listed on the agenda, so we're going to old business. Do you have any old business, Mr. Steinhardt?
Yes, I do. I just want to remind the board, we still have a pending issue out there with the WIC 338 license agreement, you know, for next year. I mean, the, the agreement is still good in terms of the, the renewal for the permit for the, for the, for the facility track, but the actual permit that we need to do that expired in February is needed for them for the nationals, which are in June.
Okay.
So Russ, you and I have to meet with.
Right, and I did see Mr. Johnson's email this afternoon.
Yeah, they've been, they've been postponing and canceling events.
Okay.
But, but, but our discussion on that issue is with the American Legion.
Correct.
Who have to.
And, and Mr. Pike gave me a call yesterday or the day before. I, I told him that I hope he understood and appreciated the situation, all the things that we're dealing with in town government. I said that we would be sitting down at some point and discussing everything, and that we certainly, as a board, appreciated the difficulties everyone is facing due to this pandemic. So we will begin to reach out, because Mr. Johnson seems to think from that email that there's a chance of having that motocross national. So if that is the case, we need to begin to wrap everything up.
Right, put that permit in place, yep.
Got it.
My next item is in terms of, in the accounting office, we have Carol back, and she's working on the F Y 21 budget documents with Laura and Melinda, and they'll be coming forward in the near future with documents for the Select Board and the Finance Committee to review.
I think Hope has joined us.
We can hear you.
How you doing, Hope?
I'm good. I've been listening. I didn't know you guys could hear me.
Oh, yeah, yes, we can.
Hi. Sorry, my phone locked in. I didn't know you could hear me. I was like, you can talk, you can't hear me.
We'll excuse it this time, Hope. All right, other old business. Okay, then I have some old business. It's related to, I said that I would be working with the C A O and the town clerk, treasure collector, Michelle Hill, to come up with some recommendations for the Select Board. And these are a couple of the recommendations we've come up with. One, dog licenses to be extended to July 1st, 2020. There seems to be some difficulties with people getting rabies shots, and of course, you know, limited access to Town Hall and actually getting hands-on and actual physical license. Transfer station, the current stickers are good to July 1st. We're suggesting that we give them an additional 30-day grace period to August 1st. And then concerning the real estate and personal property bills, I think everybody is aware that many communities are giving people an additional 30 days. Our bills went out where they would be due May 1st. We're suggesting that they be due June 1st to give everybody an additional 30 days, and that would be allowed under the Governor's Orders, Chapter 53, Acts of 2020. All right, the, the town clerk wanted me to make sure that people understood that this would not affect water bills that are being mailed out, because those are due June 9th, but people have eight weeks to pay them, so.
They're going out next week.
Right, they're going out next week.
So there'll be plenty, there'll be twice as much time to pay.
And the town clerk, in our discussions, we also talked about the fact that the school region is due a payment of $3 million on May 1st. I have suggested to the town clerk that between her, Mr. Steinhardt, and myself, we reach out to the region to discuss the possibility of them taking perhaps a 50% payment on May 1st and taking the additional 50% on June 1st. This would help our cash flow and also make it a situation where we weren't having to rely on a lot of borrowings that would increase the interest costs to the town of Southwick and to the taxpayers. So those are the recommendations. Discussion?
I think it's a good idea if they're able to, to hold off a month on half the money, given that we're going to push out all the bills and everything else, and I think it's good practice to, for that, and it's also good practice on some of these permits just to keep people from having to come out and come down to Town Hall, and we can do some of the transactions by mail or what have you.
Okay. Mr. Dede?
Well, yeah, I think it's all fine. I did meet with the high school, I'm sorry, the district superintendent and the posse through the Zoom thing, and I, I was the bat cop, so they're well-prepared for any conversations you guys might have. I gave them the reality check, like there was no tomorrow.
I, I.
Be aware of what's in front of them.
I, I thank you for softening them up for me, Mr. Dede.
Hour and a half, hour and a half on the phone.
All right.
And they were, at first, I mean, they're just a little, I don't know, starry-eyed, but when I got done, we were all on the same page.
All right. So no one has any problems with these recommendations?
No.
Okay, let's put it in a form of a motion, then.
Doug Mogul will make that motion.
Joe Dede will second.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Joe Dede, aye.
It's unanimous. All right, I took care of my part of old business. Mr. Mogul, old business?
Not too much. We did have, obviously, this is our first selectmen's meeting on this Zoom technology, and you can see that we have guests that can participate and observe as they could under the regular open meeting law, and we've had a couple other boards and commissions have met using this technology, and so far, it's been grand. So we'll keep up the pace on that, and we're getting more people trained to be able to be the hosts for these meetings as we, as we move along.
Well, I certainly want to say how much we are. Well, I certainly want to say how much we appreciate all your efforts, Mr. Mogul, because you have spearheaded this, and I know you've been training people, answering a lot of questions, so I know you've been spending a great deal, and it certainly is appreciated during this time.
No problem, don't tell my boss.
Oh, I'm sure he'll never even find out about it.
I was wondering about your schedule because you seem to be hosting quite a good, quite a few meetings. You okay with that? You have enough time?
There's plenty of time to sleep when you're.
When you're dead, yes.
Alive.
Mr. DeeDee, old business?
No.
All right.
All right, I did reach out to DPW, it's probably under new business, to go over potholes, what roads are done, where roads are headed to. I did, I believe, got an email at some point today. I haven't opened it. They are done using our new hot box for now because the mix they can get is much better because it's open. I explained to them, please put that hot box away properly so we'll be able to be used in the fall again. You know, they completely understood, and if they got to move some someone else's other equipment out of some parts of that building to store that inside, then so be it. We need that to work for the fall.
Absolutely.
I'll get you guys an update here soon. I just, I didn't want to open that email.
I put that under new business.
All right, Mr. Steinhardt had that under new business. So I I think we've covered it. I'm going to go to Mr. Steinhardt now for new business.
Yeah, today I had a conference call with the Mass Municipal Association membership, and it covered the legislation signed by the governor last week on issues relating to town meetings being rescheduled, permits being extended, and finances for local governments, some of the same things that Mr. Fox just took action on today through the clerk's office and the treasurer's office. They also talked about more testing sites are coming for first responders. I believe that the BE location is now going to be in play.
Correct.
One up in Lowell. Another issue discussed was preparing for the aid coming from the federal government through that stimulus package to the states, and part of it will be our need to track our costs. So we we do have certain staff that have been identified to sit in on those webinars, including the emergency management director, someone from our office and the accounting office. There's also a discussion on the need of the state legislature to determine the year-end finances of the Commonwealth in terms of how it will affect the remaining local aid payments for the town, as well as the revised budget revenue picture for the state and how they will finalize a budget document for the state that, of course, includes the school region aid as well as the local aid payments to the towns. So that was all part of a conference call today with Jeff Beckwith and the lieutenant governor had sat in on that.
Okay, excellent. Any other new business?
No. Well, we will have, there is some at the end of the agenda, and there's no minutes ready to accept tonight, but just the acknowledgement of the warrant.
Yeah, I, okay, I I apologize. I should acknowledge payables warrant number 2025B dated 4/6/2020 in the amount of $225,463.49.
And I will send everybody, all of those other minutes that are listed on the agenda are done and finished, so I'll send them to people so that they can have it for Thursday night's meeting.
Okay. All right, so dates to remember, the first is we'll have our next meeting on Thursday night.
It was posted today, 5 o'clock.
5 o'clock.
So this will allow the board, it's posted in such a way where the board can just update itself on the issues we're dealing with now and any housekeeping issues. And then it also allows you to dial in for the Board of Health meeting that's supposed to be done through the Zoom format.
Okay. The other thing is building inspector, final candidates interviews.
Right, we have three candidates that are just sitting out there, so at some point, I'm not saying we need to do something right now, but at some point I think we're going to need to go and deal with the issue of interviewing them. And I'm not sure if you want to do that through this type of a process or if you want to wait until, you know, you think we can go back to smaller gatherings.
Less than 10 and social distancing?
Oh, you can do that now.
Okay.
You could do that now.
All right. I'll let the board digest that. We can talk about it on Thursday.
Carry it forward.
Is that good? Okay, I see some nodding. All right.
It's not out of the question, I mean, if to even conduct the interview via Zoom, and it's an open session meeting, that person could be just like anyone else in this meeting to do it if we were going to do it. I've seen it done in other other areas before.
Okay.
Yep.
I think we should do it, and if we don't, you know, because you just interview them, it's not like we're hiring them, right? Separately, they dial in, and then we can talk about it after. And if we're not comfortable with what we did, we can then move on to maybe meeting them, you know?
Okay.
I don't think, can't hurt.
All right, all right. We can digest that, talk about it again on Thursday and see what we're going to come up. Have we covered everything?
Yes.
Okay. On Thursday's meeting, I will be staying at the Fox Rosa.
No way.
Yes. I I I have disrupted Mr. Steinhardt enough. I was trying to make sure that there was a presence here of one select board member at town hall, but I I understand now that we have technical difficulties, and I won't disrupt Mr. Steinhardt anymore, and I'll be working from home in the future. And I do have a flag out in the front yard, so we'll be able to continue to do the pledge of allegiance when we begin our meetings. With that, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mogul, aye.
Joe DeeDee, aye.
All right, thank you, gentlemen, stay safe. Everybody else stay safe.
Everybody stay safe. Thank you all for joining.
Bye, everyone.
Bye, Hope.
Hope, good to see you.
Good to see you, Hope.